...of the Temple City Council for Thursday, July 20, 2017. Please rise as Renee Flores, Deputy City Secretary, leads us in the invocation, followed by our Pledge of Allegiance, which will be led by Buford Craig, our transformed Temple Coordinator.
If you would like to bow your heads and close your eyes and let us pray. So, dear heavenly Father, we would like to thank you for blessing us with another day. Lord, in your word, it says in Jeremiah 29:11 that, "For I know the plan that I have for you," declares the Lord, plan to prosper you, not to harm you, plans to give you hope and a future. I'd like to declare that today over our city today, Lord, that you be with us, that you be with our hearts, that you be with our minds, and guide us, especially our mayor, our council, and our city staff as we make decisions for our city. Lord, we ask that you just continue to be with those who watch over us throughout our city and keep us safe as well. Lord, we thank you for hearing our prayer, we thank you for your presence, we thank you for the many blessings to come, and in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the pledge.
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you both. And if I can compliment Renee, you really say a good prayer. We've heard several of them, but they're always very nice. Now is the opport-- and your pledge is good too, Buford. I'm sorry. You remembered the words. Now is the opportunity for public comments. Citizens who desire to address the council on any matter may sign up to do so prior to this meeting. Please limit comments to three minutes. No discussion or final action will be taken by the city council. And have Mr. Bill DeGatano. And just to mention, we will have a public hearing. We have a public hearing scheduled for this, for item nine, if you would like to defer till then, or you're welcome to speak during both times.
I'll defer.
Yes, sir. Patricia Anderson. Yes, ma'am. You'll just step to the podium.
My name is Patricia Anderson, and I'm a patron of the HOP and live in Temple. I'm in stage four kidney disease, and I'm about to go into dialysis, and it's a life and death situation. I have multiple disabilities, and I cannot drive and rely on the HOP services to get me to and from my many appointments at Scott &amp; White. I have been on the HOP for at least a year and a half. I can't even imagine what I'll do without transportation. I don't think the HOP has agreed to a reasonable solution to their problem. I'm only .8 miles right outside the designated area of seven and a half miles. I live with my sister, and she is legally blind and also depends solely on the HOP. I don't know what I'm going to do about my great need of transportation. Hopefully, the HOP can come to some reasonable explanation to benefit all those who are totally disabled. Thank you.
And ma'am, do you mind just saying your address for the record?
312 West Killen Lane, Temple, Texas 76501.
Thank you, ma'am. And I have Lana Lambright?
Yes.
All right.
I need her to read mine.
Oh, that's no problem.
I'll say my name.
I'll say my name, though. And your address.
Do you need my address now or later?
Just now, if you don't mind.
Okay. My name is Lana Lambright. I live at 312 West Killen Lane. This is my sister Patricia Anderson. I'm also patron of the HOP services, and I am legally blind, and I have another disability that I'm not able to get around to my doctor's appointments and to the pharmacy and to even buy groceries and everything. So, she's going to read what I wrote down for my little speech.
I moved to Temple, Texas after the death of my husband from Houston, which had a transit system and was told the HOP could provide me transportation since I cannot drive for blindness. After one and a half years, we are told by the HOP that I am just 0.5 outside the mapped area where the HOP will discontinue my service. I have multiple disa-- I have-- I am multiply disabled and have no bus lines in my area, and there is no one to transport me to even to buy groceries to my many doctor's appointments, and I am in dire need of the transport system to enlarge the-- to accommodate people like myself and take the necessary measures to help the blind and other disabled patrons who work and live in the Temple area. We do not want to end up homeless and homebound and starving. Thank you for any help you can give us for this area's situation. Thank you.
Thank you both. Mr. Chris DeGraff.
Hi, I'm Chris DeGraff, and my address is 515 East Xavier Avenue. There's a lot of papers, but it's because it's large print.
Yeah, that's all right.
Okay. Good evening. I would like to speak with you today on behalf of the hundreds of soon-to-be displaced citizens living in the city due to the HOP changes effective September 1st. Disabled veterans, elderly citizens, and the physically disabled who depend on paratransit door-to-door services offered to them by HOP for the past 20 years are now about to be unqualified for this very essential service. While seeking efficiencies and adjusting for program funding needs is understandable, it appears that the collective decision is that this impact segment of the community will be considered collateral damage. That is simply unacceptable. The city of Temple was once a key leader in offering its own temple transit service, taking elderly and disabled to places around the city. It had its limitations, but overall helped us a lot. When HOP came along around 20 years ago, temple transit became obsolete. HOP took over and provided the same style services, but with many inefficient policies and practices, like a bunch of large gas-guzzling vehicles to provide service at $2 per person per way, that would simply not be a very fiscal way to run a business. But the cost never increased more than for over a decade. HOP services started years before there was even a mention of a fixed route service in the city. It is-- in its first years, the Temple HOP was only a paratransit door-to-door service agency covering any and all qualified elderly and disabled people within the city limits. I have many suggestions to offer HOP and this council on ways to improve revenue and decrease inefficiency for the services which affect the company. Ideas like possibly increasing the pay rates if needed, limiting destination spots to key commercesries to cover everyone on the service, implementing using smaller gas-saving vehicles for the ambulatory customers, creating a text alert automated call system, alerting customers to know when they're within five minutes of pickup, and more ideas. Each of these suggestions would possibly save enough or earn enough to help supplement the shortfalls HOP has seen over the past few years. I'm almost done. This is how we should be addressing the inefficiency concerns brought on by the HOP instead of voluntarily cutting hundreds of people who use these services for life-sustaining needs like grocery shopping, healthcare concerns, and even job retention. The ADA guidelines mentioned by the HOP leadership in the past weeks are only the basic minimum standards that they are required to do. It clearly states on the FTA website that their company can expand on their own if they wish to. It does not affect or hurt them whatsoever. HOP simply is just taking the quick fix, dropping to the bare minimum to keep their FTA funding, and then hurting lots of people in the process. Rather than the wholesale elimination of services for some of the most vulnerable in our community, I would encourage the council to help explore alternatives to eliminate inefficiencies of the HOP's current operation. I urge this council to please consider these suggestions and pass them along to HOP through the Transportation Board. Please do not let our elderly and disabled community down. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. DeGraff.
Thank you.
Ms. Cheryl Goodnight.
Yes. Oh, sorry. The blind lady in the blind. All right, the podium is right here. Can I step up? Right there. Okay. My name is Cheryl Goodnight, and I reside at 2203 Fox Glen Lane in Temple, Texas 76502. Temple has always been a very progressive city as far back as I can remember when in my life, and I just relocated here in February of 2015 from Little River Academy down the road. And one of the main considerations about where I wanted to settle the rest of my life was obviously in the city limits of Temple, where I could have access to public transportation. I work at Temple College as a faculty member. I'm a flute instructor there, and also at the University of Mary Harden Baylor in Belton, Texas, and at Lake Belton Middle School in the instrumental program as a private lessons instructor. And the HOP has been a wonderful resource for transportation since I've been here. The drivers have been great. They have been absolutely so considerate in every way possible, and I feel very safe with this mode of transportation. And one of the things that one has to think about in their daily life is the basic essentials for living, which are food, clothing, shelter, that we all know, and certainly transportation, because that's very essential in getting to work, in which when I work at the schools, that's how I make my living. Also, all of us have to have medical appointments to maintain our health, and we also have to have food and go to the grocery store in order to purchase it, go to the bank in which to handle our business and finances. And I've felt a great sense of independence since I've been able to have access to the special transit services. And I would please ask you all if you would give careful consideration to maintaining such a wonderful service. I myself would be more than happy to pay just a little bit more in order to maintain this great service. There are other cities that are close to the same size as Temple that have the paratransit, and just because Temple may be a little bit smaller, I've always thought that the quality of living and what they provided for its citizens was always outstanding, and let's keep it outstanding and go forward in the future to always improve.
Thank you, ma'am. Next up is Deanna DeGraff.
Deanna.
Deanna, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
I've known you long enough. I just call you Ms. DeGraff.
My name is Deanna DeGraff, and I live at 815 West French Avenue, and I am also going to talk about transportation today. I am one of the fortunate ones that is still within that three-quarters mile of a bus stop, so I get to keep my service. However, I run a blind support group here in Temple called the VIPs, which stands for visually impaired persons, who are very important people, and I am going to lose several of my members because they are not within the bus system to be able to come to the meetings. Most of these people count on the HOP to be independent. Once they lose that independence, they are going to stay at home and withdraw from the community and all the activities. Now, they talk about not being able to get to doctor's appointments. That's not going to be the case for everyone, because the HOP will still run if you have Medicaid to get to your doctor's appointments, except most of us don't have Medicaid. We have Medicare or other insurance that the HOP will not take. So again, we are going to be stuck with no transportation to get around. Once this service starts in September, we are only going to be stuck. Now, I don't mean stuck, but we will be trapped only in Temple. We will not be able to go to Belton no longer. Belton will not be able to come to Temple no longer. We would have to take one bus to catch another bus, to catch another bus, to catch another bus. I'm on the Regional Transportation Board in Belton. I'm going to have to resign because I can no longer get to the transportation meeting. If I do decide to go, I would have to make four different bus connections, take three hours to go one way, and it would cost me $9 just to go to the transportation meeting. I'll have to quit. I can't afford to do that. We do have Uber, and we will have Lyft, but anyone who's on a fixed income will not be able to afford those services. So please take into consideration, we do need to keep our transit service for everyone. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay. Oh, you're on that side.
Next up is Ms. Marion Byrd.
I live at 504 West Calhoun Avenue. I have been on the transit for about close, a little over 20 years, I guess, and have greatly appreciated their services. But like you've heard already so many times, that we're going to be limited on where we can go as far as doctors, shopping. There are some of us who, for instance, wheelchair people who don't live close to the bus stop, it's going to be unsafe for them to get to the bus stop in the rain and the cold. So, you know, I don't see-- I don't see how these people are going to manage, because, you know, I'm older now, and yes, I have family, but they don't live here, so, you know, I can't depend on them. And neither can a lot of these wheelchair people, and besides that, you know, you have to have a Lyft for the wheelchair to be transported. So, family can't always be the answer. So, I would appreciate it if everyone would consider making things still exist for the HOP people, and our drivers are excellent. We have very, very-- I have run into very, very few drivers that don't assist you and tell you when, you know, you're at your destination. So, let's all hope for the best and keep our wheelchair people, our blind people, all of us who are-- need their services. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. And if I could just-- if I could just say that this is a matter that was just brought up to us a couple of weeks ago from the HOP, and as I think some of y'all have read, the city of Temple contributes right at about 6% annually to the HOP budget, and I would encourage you, and I don't have the dates in front of me, but the public hearings that the HOP will have, if you--
It's August 9.
Thank you. Thank you. I would encourage everybody to go and share those sentiments, because we were-- we, as a community, were surprised about it as well. But thank you all for coming. I have one more person, Ms. Debbie Shine. And defer. Yes, ma'am. And item three is the consent agenda. All items listed under this section are considered to be routine by the city council and may be enacted by one motion. If discussion is desired by the council, any item may be removed from the consent agenda at the request of any council member and will be considered separately. Council, this is item 3A through 3J. Are there any items that you would like to remove for separate consideration? And I know we are going to move-- we are going to remove item-- sorry, you told me this, 3G, because it actually-- we have a public hearing on it. But I will entertain a motion for item three with the exception of 3G.
So moved. Second.
Motion to second. Madam Secretary.
Councilmember Long.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Phil Kington.
Aye.
Councilmember Morales.
Aye.
Mayor Dunn.
Aye.
And item 3G, the second reading and a-- actually, third reading in a public hearing, consider adopting an ordinance authorizing amendments to the city of Temple's Unified Development Code, Article 6, Section 6.7, related to the Interstate 35 Corridor Overlay Zoning District, to amend the boundary description, applicability, uses allowed in the development standards, including landscaping, architecture, and signage. And as we discussed earlier in workshop, this says public hearing. We've had one, but because we've announced it, we need to go ahead and schedule one, so we won't have a presentation for it. And at this time, I will open the public hearing, and if anyone would like to speak on that wonderful presentation Brian gave us, they're welcome to. There being no one wishing to speak, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Council, your pleasure on the final reading of item 3G.
Motion to approve item 3G.
I second that motion.
Motion to second. Madam Secretary.
Councilmember Long.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Phil Kington.
Aye.
Councilmember Morales.
Aye.
Mayor Dunn.
Aye.
And ladies and gentlemen, I'm going to deviate from the agenda and actually take item nine first, and I'll explain this-- I'll explain this shortly. It's first read in a public hearing. Consider an ordinance adopting a rezoning from agricultural zoning to planned development, urban estate zoning, and its planned development site plan on 86.91 acres situated in the Redding-Roberts survey abstract 692, Bell County, Texas, located southeast of FM 93 and Southwood Drive, 3093 West FM 93. And the reason why I'm putting this to the front is because I know that there are numerous people here, and as of about an hour and a half ago, there was a request to table this item until the next meeting. However, we are still scheduled for a public hearing, and you are more than welcome to speak on this if you wish, although we won't have a presentation on it until the next meeting, which is the--
August 3.
August 3. Forgive me, I'm having calendar problems tonight. But did want to mention that, and, Councilor, are there any questions at this time? And again, you will have-- there will be another public hearing during that other reading, so you're welcome to speak now, or if you'd like to defer, it's certainly your choice. That being said, I will open the public hearing on item nine. Yes, sir.
Bill DeGatano, 2715 Forrester Road, 76502. First, want to thank the council for listening and have spoken with several of you this week about this issue, and multiple people could not be here this evening, so I think it is fair to just make some brief comments. Primary concern, I think that everybody has spoken about, both those that are adjacent to this property and those of us that are not, like Michelle and I, we do enjoy 300 feet of Friars Creek, though, and so that's our concern of flooding runoff and the septic systems that are proposed for this development. I met with Mayor Dunn this week and learned a lot about TexDOT that I think I knew already based on I-35, but that is a huge concern of ours for the intersection of 31st Street and Highway 93 with the new development north of the corner store, which, forgive me, I don't remember the name of that one, this proposed development, and I would assume six to eight to 900 cars are going to be introduced there over the next two to three years, and TexDOT will be coming late to the party to create safe issues there. Not sure how many new roads are coming in from both of those, the proposed development as well as the one that has been approved. The runoffs, all of you have seen the photographs, the videos, you've seen the costs that have been incurred by the Lynch's and others, the Verheidens downstream quite a bit from this proposed, and that's not going to change. We've got trash. We're losing heritage oaks and pecan trees along that creek all the way around, and I do find it interesting in one of my conversations this week that the city has implemented a drainage fee in the sewer lines, basically, but if we're implementing septic systems, we're not going to take advantage of those drainage fees to have a master plan for drainage in the city of Temple. So, that's something to consider as well. And then I think, I appreciate the consideration. It would just be nice to know that-- and why would we, a progressive city, developing city, want to put 100-plus homes in the middle of an area where there's already sewer and add septic systems right next to this Critical Creek, Friars Creek? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. DeGatano. Anyone else wishing to speak? This time-- oh, yes, sir, Mr. Hubbard.
I asked.
Of course you can. And I think you walked in after I made this statement. There has been a request to table this item, but you'll have another opportunity to speak at the next meeting, should you wish to do that, but you're welcome to speak now.
My name is Lee Hubbard, and I live at 6920 Boutwell Drive. That's on the corner of 93 and Boutwell Drive, directly west, southwest of the Valero. And I'm just going to start there and try to move quickly through that, but city commissioners, and I say this with kindness, you guys do a great job for our city, and I'm not pointing a finger at either one, but when you do something as drastic as letting that Valero go on that corner, and I just couldn't hardly believe that some of you hadn't done your homework. Three years ago, you checked me out. That was the leading wreck intersection in Temple, Texas. You can imagine what goes on there now. It is horrendous. It was a horrendous decision to ever zone that thing commercial and let that Valero go on that corner. We've got all kinds of stop and goes in Belton and Temple. And another thing, I have worked tirelessly, month after month, with Texas DOT. They're about to throw their hands up. They don't know what to do with that thing, and by that I mean, when you're coming from Belton on 93, they've got signs up, get in that lane, don't get in, don't stand in the one you're in, but now with the Valero there, there are people got their blinkers on, and we get over facing that lane to make our turn in our lane on Boutwell Drive, and here they come. They will turn in, and maybe three or four cars are thinking, well, they're turning there, I'm going on through. We have been missed by inches, and probably some sitting here this evening, that's missed head-on collisions just by cars screeching around on the other side. We had one the other day came straight at me, westbound, had no way to let that car over. There was a trucker in traffic behind this guy that was coming straight at me. He went in almost to the ditch in Taylor Valley Baptist Church and let that car go by.
Mr. Hubbard, and let me interrupt you, if you don't mind, just keeping your comments about this particular zoning case.
Well, it certainly is connected. That's what I'm getting at. And then with more people being put into this project, and the thing that I'm concerned about that and we addressed that in the planning commission is, and I don't know where we stand, I understood that that was totally out, that they would not allow a six-foot-wide concrete walkway from 93 all down through that dark, big, heavy timber for about a mile on the end down behind our state representative, known down by Dr. Scott. That water in there gets up 20 feet, folks, and we certainly don't want that walkway coming down through there. You're going to form two things, a place for couples to get in there and walk, or even some kind of a trail. It's going to be a booze place and a drug fest down in there because it's about a mile of huge timber, and we're very concerned about that. I've lived there around corner 47 years. I'm not saying that homes won't be built and that sort of thing, but I think you need to do something right in a way that protects all of the people. They've addressed the septic system. That's another item, so-- but that's my comment, folks. On these big decisions, please do your homework.
Thank you, sir.
Hi, I'm Debbie Shine, the property owner at 318 Forrester Road. We share the bulk of the creek with Mr. Wall. I've spoken my concerns at both of the prior P&amp;Z meetings. First and foremost, it's the additional flooding that 103 rooftops and accompanying cement and asphalt will cause. I've spoken with the city engineers, county commissioners-- I've spoken with the city engineers, county commissioners, FEMA, and some environmental consultants. Some of these sources believe that the retention ponds will slow down the water and possibly prevent flooding, some do not, but everyone agrees that the volume of water will be increased, and therefore, the erosion of my property and my neighbors' properties will be worsened. The county bridge by my driveway has washed out twice, it was repaired about eighteen months ago, but it's already starting to show damage, and the water line that runs through the creek was also destroyed during one of the floods. You've been emailed, that we've just talked to you about all the different flooding that we've incurred. Used to, it was if we'd had a really big rain, now a small rain happens to cause the flooding. At our last meeting, one of the engineers stated that in the past, the city hasn't handled the drainage as well as they could have. The drainage requirements aren't as strict in Temple as they are in some other cities because we are a pro-growth community, and growth is great, it's wonderful, we all love it, but it also has to be responsible. As each new development, Deerfield, Springwood Creek, Misty Creek, Dantonios, has come online, our flooding problem along Friars Creek has gotten worse. The council has recently approved Legacy Ranch, which will enormously increase the volume of water flowing into Friars Creek, and we haven't even begun to see what impact that development is going to have on our flooding problem. Is it responsible to add additional pressure to the creek before we know the answer to that question? The retention ponds in Valor Trails that are proposed are mostly in the floodplain, and all drain directly into the creek. We've driven on that property in the past, been on that property and seen the seepage, what is probably due to a high-water table. A high-water table will affect the efficiency of the retention ponds and the viability of septic systems. I spoke today, again, with the Bell County Health Department, I understand there is a preliminary approval for septic systems based solely on the half-acre lots, there's not been a ground study done yet. I know that the adjacent subdivision of Valley Ranch ran into trouble with septic systems and had to go with sewer. My neighbors, the Thomases, who are not able to be here because of a family vacation, have well water on their property which adjoins the subdivision. Please don't make a decision based on preliminary approval alone. I've met with an environmental consultant who believes that the additional rooftops and cement will increase not only the flooding to my property, but it will also change the existing floodplain, causing more of my acreage to be inside the floodplain. This would also be true for my neighbors as well along the creek. Who will be responsible for the damages associated to the loss of value for our properties? Will it be the city of Temple, or will it be Mr. Wall? Another concern I have is the proposed city trail along the creek or the HOA park. My property line extends to the middle of the creek, and I am unable to fence that off. We've already told you how quickly and violently that our creek floods. When my son was fifteen, he almost drowned in that creek and was saved by slamming into a tree, which we've since lost to erosion. So when somebody from that HOA park or walking along the trail drowns and unfortunately washes up on my property or Mr. Thomases or one of my neighbors downstream, who's going to be held responsible for that death? Will it be the city, or Mr. Wall, or will it be the property owners? Please don't place that kind of liability or responsibility on us. I've asked the city attorney the same questions, they're valid questions which need to be answered before a decision can be made. We have a significant flooding problem, and I'm asking you to please not make that worse. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Shine. Is there anyone, anyone else wishing to speak at this time? If not, I will declare the public hearing closed. And again, there has been a request to table, so we can continue to do homework and work on this, and I will, if there are no further questions or comments, I will entertain a motion to table.
Mayor, I have a motion to, my motion is to allow this to be tabled until the August third council meeting, that will allow further evaluation of the issues related to septic versus sewer.
Second. Motion to second, Madam Secretary.
Councilmember Long?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Pilkington?
Aye.
Councilmember Morales?
Aye.
Mayor Dunn?
Aye.
And ladies and gentlemen, thank you all for being here, and had we known earlier about this possibility, we certainly would have tried to reach out to you. Go back to item four, consider adopting a resolution approving the master preliminary plat of North Gate, a two-hundred-point-zero-three-five-acre, five-hundred-twenty-eight-lot, twenty-block residential subdivision with developer-requested exception to Unified Development Code, Section eight-point-three Parkland dedication for private parks situated in the Baldwin Robertson survey, abstract number seventeen, Bell County, Texas, located south and southwest of State Highway thirty-six, north of Prairie View Road, and east of Pea Ridge Road. Mr. Chandler?
Good evening, Mayor and Counsel. This plat and the exception was reviewed on June nineteenth by the Planning and Zoning Commission. And just to orient you to the site, looking to the top right with the aerial map, it's just south of Airport and north of Prairie View, and you can see a photo of it, essentially Westfield Boulevard would have to be extended in the future for that development. And once again, it's a little over two-hundred acres, five-hundred-and-twenty-eight lots. The Development Review Committee did review this on June eighth, and then June twelfth with the applicant, and is deemed administratively complete on June fifteenth. And because of the exception to the Parkland dedication requirements in Section eight-point-three, you all as city council are the final plat authority on this, and that Parkland exception is to have a privately maintained, HOA-maintained park, since the requirements are for public park dedication. And just a little bit more background, water would be provided through eight-inch lines, sewer as well, the drainage would be provided through a series of tracks designated for detention. Lot fifty-three, block thirteen is to be used as a future street extension, per UDC Section eight-point-two-D-four, and then the proposed preliminary plat is in agreement with the recent planned development zoning case that you all approved last month. And so the plat is to the right, and just to orient you, of course, this is Airport Road, and then Westfield running through the middle of the plat. Bottom left-hand corner, that's the existing phase of North Gate, so this would connect to that existing single-family development, North Pea Ridge on the west as well, and would include mostly single-family, but with some retail along Airport. And related, the green space, so the exhibit that you see to the right, blue identifies green space that is also used for stormwater detention, and then the green would be the park space, and so total of fifteen-point-nine-eight acres of green space and five-point-two-six would be for park use. Also, the Parks and Recreation Department is in support of this exception. So staff recommends approval with the requested exception to Parkland dedication, and the planning and zoning recommendation at the June nineteenth meeting was for approval per staff recommendation as well. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Chandler. Counsel, any questions on item four? If not, I will entertain a motion for item four.
Motion to approve item four?
I second that motion.
Motion to second, Madam Secretary.
Councilmember Long?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Pilkington?
Aye.
Councilmember Morales?
Aye.
Mayor Dunn?
Aye.
Item five, consider adopting a resolution authorizing approval of the preliminary master plan for South Point, seventy-six-point-five-five-eight-acre, three-hundred-thirty-one-lot, nine-blocks, six-track, mixed-use development, with an exception to the Unified Development Code, Section eight-point-two-point-one-D-four, street openings. The subdivision is situated in the Maximo Moreno survey, abstract number fourteen, Bell County, Texas, generally located north of southeast HK Dodge and Loop, Highway thirty-six, east of South Martin Luther King Junior Drive, and south and west of Case Road. Mr. Baker?
Thank you, Mayor, City Council, and again, this item was also before the Planning and Zoning Commission on June nineteenth. Just to give you kind of a location and location where this property is, bordered by South Martin Luther King Junior Drive, Case Road, Highway thirty-six, and Loop three-sixty-three. As you may remember, or as you may recall, this property was the subject of a rezoning that was approved last month for multiple zoning districts, and now before you is the preliminary plat with the exception for street openings. And again, that became effective on June first, and had the zoning breakdown for retail, single-family, and for townhomes. Again, this preliminary master plan was reviewed by the Development Review Committee on June eighth and deemed to complete on June fifteenth. It does propose ten local street names, which I have listed on the slide. I also want to point, I don't have a slide, but again, just kind of reiterating the breakdown that the plat is actually proposing three-hundred-and-thirty-one lots, three-hundred-and-twenty-nine of those would be for single-family. This is also made up of nine blocks and six tracks, as was in the item description. Now, with the necessary exception, this is a two-part code provision, the first is for a subdivision plat to make provisions for future projection of streets, and the second part is for that street access be approximately every one-thousand feet on all sides of the perimeter boundary. This particular subdivision has made accommodations in a reasonable effort for that street connectivity on all sides. The single requirement of the perimeter distancing of a thousand feet had not been met, and so that triggered the exception, staff is supportive of that exception. And again, a copy of the preliminary master plan, again, with three-hundred-and-twenty-nine single-family lots. I do want to point out with detail A, that there was additional discussion within your staff report regarding tract F, and the applicant is providing an access easement to cross this property, and otherwise would have triggered a second exception, but this has been addressed. In terms of green space and sidewalk, sidewalks are being provided, again, all these streets are being proposed as local streets, however, the developer is proposing sidewalk along several sections functioning in much more of a capacity as a collector road, but again, these are all local streets. Green space is indicated by the green areas and additional acreage and uses of the separate tracks as well was provided in your staff report.
Mr. Baker, can I stop you for just a second? Officer, would you mind asking them to just keep it down outside? I know this is a lot of fun, but it was, I don't, some of us couldn't hear everything that was going on. Forgive me, Mr. Baker, sorry about that.
Just a couple of the entrance details, as well as the proposed roundabout that is being proposed within the subdivision. And again, I've also pointed out tract F because of the additional discussion I had in my report. As you may recall, from the recent rezoning, some of the photographs that may be a repeat from the rezoning, again, showing the site as well as kind of an overall panorama of the subject property. Both water and sewer are available to the site, and shown by different dimensions for both water and sewer. There's a couple of potential future phases or activity that could proceed on the property. One would be the potential closure, partial closure to traffic of a portion of Case Road, which I've identified by the blue. This could possibly be used for trail or hike and bike access, potential for parking to support the hike and bike trail, and the use of a three-point-three-acre city-owned tract as a potential park site, and park fees from the South Point subdivision may be available to improve that. Again, I do want to point out, no formal application for either one of these phases have been submitted, and discussion is both ongoing and has not been finalized, but I do want to point out those are potential. Staff is recommending approval of the request for the preliminary master plan for South Point and the exception to UDC Section eight-point-two-point-one-D-four with regard to street openings. At the June nineteenth meeting, the Planning and Zoning Commission voted seven to zero to approve per staff's recommendation. And I conclude my presentation, I'm available if you have any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Baker, and again, I'm sorry for my interruption. Only thing I'd like to say is I think it's wonderful that we're having some development in that part of our city, and I think it's a wonderful thing.
I think it's exciting, I think there's a lot more new development going that way, and we welcome that. Thank you.
And I'll just say, maybe if we can get enough people out there, it can get the hop to start coming back, so...
Feel faster.
Just pointing that out, just pointing that out. Anybody else have anything? All right, I will entertain a motion on item five.
I'll make a motion for approval.
Second. Motion to second, Madam Secretary.
Councilmember Long?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Pilkington?
Aye.
Councilmember Morales?
Aye.
Mayor Dunn?
Aye.
Item six, first reading in a public hearing, consider adopting an ordinance rezoning from two-family zoning district to planned development, two-family zoning district and its site development plan on five-point-zero-seven-eight acres situated in the Maximo Moreno survey, abstract fourteen, Bell County, Texas, located at eleven-oh-nine and twelve-oh-three East Downs Avenue. Mr. Chandler?
Thank you, Mayor and Counsel. The applicant for this case is Pat Dauphinay, and this was heard by Planning and Zoning on June nineteenth, and of course, this is the first reading. And so the site is shown here, also in East Temple, at East Calhoun and East Barton. North Twentieth is just off of the site to the west, and East Downs is to the north. And the proposal is to allow thirteen duplexes through the planned development district, and of course, the existing zoning is two-F, two-family, which does allow duplexes, however, because of some unique conditions on the site, such as overhead transmission line bisecting the property, floodplain and floodway to the west, which we'll show you some exhibits in a bit identifying that, the applicant is requesting some exceptions to the sixty-foot normal lot width minimums in two-F, and allowing a few, six specifically, lots that are less than sixty feet wide. And the proposed duplexes would be a continuation of existing duplexes owned by the same property owner to the north. And so looking at the zoning map, you can see that the light brown indicates the two-F, two-family district, and to the east of that, light yellow is single-family three, you have general retail to the south, and then you have a little bit of commercial and general retail nearby to the west. Access would be from local streets, East Barton and East Calhoun avenues, and so this proposal is certainly compliant with the zoning map. Future land use map identifies this area as auto-urban residential, which is intended for areas of smaller single-family homes, but also a mixture of other housing types such as garden or patio homes and duplexes and townhomes as well. Also, calling for a buffer yard for adequate separation and minimum site area requirements through planned development district, which this would comply with that designation. Existing water and sewer is certainly available, you can see on the map here around the property, so it's compliant with utility needs. And here are some photos. And here are some photos. So this is from East Calhoun Avenue, which would be extended, and I'll show you the proposed site plan in a second. East Barton Avenue, that's a photo from that vantage point. Existing duplexes to the north. And to the south, some vacant property, and also single-family homes. More single-family homes to the east. And to the west, more single-family homes along North 20th. And you can also see the transmission line that bisects this piece of property. So this is the site plan, once again, for 13 duplexes on five-plus acres. The area shown in blue here is the 100-year floodplain and actually floodway. And so you can see that East Calhoun and East Barton are both proposed to extend to the west and would terminate in cul-de-sacs. And so you can also see the various lot sizes and kind of the need for the planned development district because of some of these unique obstacles for development on the site. And it's just the utility map showing how water and sewer would be extended. And this is an elevation, you know, showing the typical duplex that would be built as part of this planned development district. So just a quick comparison, looking at the development standards of current two-family versus what is proposed on site, and so I've highlighted some of the differences. Minimum lot size in 2F is 4,000. They would exceed that with 4,700 square foot lots. Minimum lot width would be 50 feet. However, a number of the lots do exceed the minimum 60-foot requirement currently in 2F. A minimum lot depth of 73 feet, front setback of 20 feet. And then lastly, a minimum corner side setback of 10 feet rather than the 15 required by code in an existing 2F district. And newspaper printed notice on May 25th, 54 notices were mailed, and three were returned, one in agreement and two in disagreement. And looking at all the various, you know, just quick summary of compliance with a comprehensive plan, as we previously mentioned, staff interprets that compliance is met with all four categories. And so staff recommends approval with the following conditions: substantial compliance with the planned development site plan, as well as compliance with UDC plating requirements at that appropriate step of the development process. Minimum lot widths of 50 feet, minimum lot depth of 73 feet specifically for Lot 1, Block 1, 86 feet in depth for Lot 2, Block 1, and 99.1 feet for Lot 3. Lot size to be a minimum of 4,700 square feet, allowing a front yard setback of 20 feet. And lastly, the construction of the cul-de-sacs on East Barton and East Calhoun avenues as shown with their lengths on the site development plan. At the June 19th meeting, Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval, per staff recommendation, seven to zero. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Chandler. Council, any questions? All right, at this time, I'll open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on this matter may do so. Please step to the podium and state your name and address for the record. If there being no one wishing to speak, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Council, your pleasure on the first reading of item six.
I move to approve item six with the conditions presented by staff.
Second. Motion to the second. Madam Secretary.
Councilmember Long.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Pilkington.
Aye.
Councilmember Morales.
Aye.
Mayor Dunn.
Aye.
Item seven, a first reading in a public hearing, consider adopting an ordinance authorizing rezoning from agricultural and single-family one zoning districts to single-family one zoning district on 42.13 acres of the Maximo Moreno survey abstract number 14, Bell County, Texas, generally located north of Drexel Loop and west of Hartrick Bluff Road. Mr. Baker.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. Again, this item was before the Planning and Zoning Commission on June 19th. Again, the item description refers to 42 acres, 42.13 plus or minus acres. This is actually a rezoning of 37 acres. There was a little overlap, and so this area in white, although was included with the original item description, would not, it already has the single-family zoning designation, and I'll explain that or show that a little bit in, a little further in my presentation. The overall subdivision circulation for this particular rezoning that staff anticipates to be forthcoming is being evaluated, and no formal plat has been submitted. And again, this is being the third phase, would also impact the Phase Two, which was approved earlier this year. And again, that piece that I referred to that overlaps was included. This is where my arrow is, is part of that 42 acre. Again, the 37 acres that actually will be rezoned is included up here as Phase Three. Back in 2010, as well as an amendment in 2011, the Phase One of Highland Park Estates was approved as a planned development and is already under construction or has been Terms of the zoning, again, the property currently has agricultural, and this would be proposed as an extension of single-family. The single-family is already in place to the south, which is part of that Phase Two. And again, with the overlap of the 42 acres of the, 37 of the 42 that are included. Terms of the future land use map, the designation for the subject property is actually estate residential. This is intended for larger rural lot development, primarily intended for half-acre lots or an urban estate type of zoning. It does, however, support the single-family one. The suburban residential, which is to the south, is intended for the smaller single-family zoning, which will be more accommodating to the single-family one or the single-family two. And with that, there's partial compliance with the future land use map. Both water and sewer are available. Terms of the thoroughfare plan and the trails plan, there is a proposed collector. This location is still under discussion and will be finalized with the review of subdivision plat. Staff has met with the applicant to look at other opportunities to include Phase Two as well as additional land that may include the impact of the proposed collector alignment. And there are no trails within the project boundaries, so in terms of thoroughfare plan and trails, there is compliance. This photograph is looking across the recently rezoned, single-family to the, single-family zoned property of Phase Two into the subject property, which is more in the area of the trees and beyond outside of the scope of the photograph. But this is taken from the end of Drexel Loop. To the south, you have the existing subdivision of Ridgewood, the Ridgewood subdivision, as well as the earlier phase of Highland Park Estates. And again, an aerial of the entire area, this area again, is the overlap of the balance between the 37 and the 42 that already has the zoning in place, but primarily surrounded by undeveloped land as well as single-family uses that are on larger acreage, all within the ag zoning. Just a listing of permitted and conditional uses and a comparison between the ag and the single-family. Again, this is going to be intended for single-family one allowed uses, single-family detached homes. Terms of development standards, just a comparison, the main takeaway would be the minimum lot size under the SF1 would be 7,500 square feet. Again, this has not been confirmed since plats have not, plat or multiple plats have not been reviewed by the city, but we would anticipate that they would be at least a 7,500 square foot. On June 8th, public notice was printed in the newspaper. 21 notices were sent out to property owners. 11 notices that are owned by the applicant were returned in agreement, and no notices in disagreement have been received. Terms of compliance, all the criteria that staff measures, except for the future land use map, were full compliant. Again, the future land use map was partial. Staff is recommending approval of the request for the 37 acres from agricultural to single-family, the SF1. And at the June 19th meeting, the Planning and Zoning Commission voted seven to zero to approve the rezoning per staff's recommendation. I do want to point out that the, if this were to be approved, the ordinance will reflect the 37 acres as opposed to the 42. And that concludes my presentation. I'm available should you have any questions, and the applicant, Mark Mendoza, is also in the audience, should you have any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Baker. I have one question I might ask Ms. Myers this. The proposed TCIP changes for this next budget, talking about Hartrick Bluff, would this area be affected?
Can you go back to the slides?
Since we were just talking about South Temple traffic, I wanted to...
Fire there.
I'm just getting busy.
So, Don, what is the, what are the boundaries of the Hartrick Bluff proposal?
Hartrick Bluff would, is proposed to extend from FM 93 up north to Waters Dairy Road.
So it's not directly adjacent to this property, but it's in the vicinity?
Correct. It's going to provide additional capacity for the traffic going, emptying through those neighborhoods and going to the east.
Thank you.
And I do want to point out that the proposal that's filed in the proposed budget would not have that, while it would be added to the TCIP, it's not proposed to be funded until 2023, so it still is in a future year.
I just, since we were just talking about traffic, I thought I would bring up that we at least have a plan, so. Anyway, anything else?
Right. At this time, I'll open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on this matter may do so. Please step to the podium and state your name and address for the record. I had no one wishing to speak. I'll declare the public hearing closed. Council, your pleasure on the first reading of item seven.
Make a motion for approval.
Second.
A motion to the second, Madam Secretary.
Councilmember Long.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Pilkington.
Aye.
Councilmember Morales.
Aye.
Mayor Dunn.
Aye.
Item eight, a first reading in a public hearing, consider adopting an ordinance and accompanying site development plan for rezoning from agricultural zoning district to planned development two-family district on 3.420 acres situated in the Baldwin Robertson survey abstract number 17, blocks 2717-A and 2812-A, Bell County, located at 9218 and 9260 Hogan Road, Temple, Texas. Ms. Barrett.
Good evening, Council. Tonight, we have another planned development. This one is a proposal to go from ag zoning to PD 2F or two-family for a duplex PD. John Keela is the applicant on behalf of the property owner, Mr. Brett Turner. Here are some overviews of the property. On the left-hand side, the map that's depicted in red is the subject property. You can see where it is in relation to Tarver and 317 on Hogan. The map on the right is a little bit closer view, so that you can see the subject property here and the Sage Meadows area here to the back, and the encore easement that is on the eastern boundary of the property. It is 3.42 acres in total. It's two different lots. It is a duplex development proposal for a cul-de-sac that would come off of Hogan Road, the 11 duplex lots totaling 22 units. They would have fenced yards and 75% masonry minimum. Here are two of the elevations, A and C. There is a B elevation, but it doesn't differ significantly from A and C. You really can't tell the difference, so that's why it's not depicted here. This is the site plan, and of course, as you've heard already, when you have planned developments, they have accompanying site plans. This is the proposal from the developer. There is an existing tree line to the back here on the northern property boundary that will be maintained, that serves as a buffer to the Sage Meadows folks that are budding. And of course, you can see that there's nothing on this eastern boundary depicted because that's the encore overhead power line. Hogan Road is proposed to be widened. It is on the TCIP, and actually acquisition for parts of that roadway widening project have occurred, and this development does actually reflect the proposed width of that new widened roadway. There'll be a drainage tract here as you, to the left of the entrances, the cul-de-sac is entered, and then there is a smaller access tract here at the back. Here's the zoning map depiction showing the subject property, which is ag. And of course, you can see the development to the north, and there is a GR and a PD GR here to the west of the property that fronts on 317. The future land use map has this property as suburban residential, which is in partial compliance with the proposal. Suburban residential is SF1 and SF2 for single-family. However, this development does closely resemble single-family in its overall density. It would be very similar. The surrounding area, of course, is a suburban commercial on the future land use map as Water is available in Hogan. Sewer would, is going to require an off-site extension, so it is in partial compliance with available utilities. That will occur at plating. The thoroughfare and trails map is depicted with the future collector status for Hogan Road. As I said, that improvement is underway. This is the overall site plan that puts together the two elevations that I showed earlier, along with the site plan that we just looked at, and each one of the duplex units is depicted with the letters on them refer back to which one of the elevations will be used. The PD conditions, of course, there's substantial compliance with the site plan. The developer is proposing 20-foot front setbacks on the lots rather than standard 25. Two of the lots are a bit less than 60-foot widths, which would be standard for 2F if it was in straight zoning. There will be a wooden fence six feet high along with an entrance sign, and that will be HOA, owner and owned and maintained. With two trees and landscaping on each lot, the developer will keep the existing tree buffer along the north property line where it abuts the subdivision to the north. There will be HOA maintained drainage tracks and access tract. The elevations will be constructed, as shown, with a minimum masonry on those structures of at least 75% on four sides. Off-site utility connections will be required. Here are some photographs of the area. The top is taken from Hogan Road looking north towards Sage Meadows, and you can see that, part of that buffer that I spoke about. The bottom photograph... The bottom photograph shows a home, an old home that is abandoned on the property that will be demolished. There is a view looking, I guess this would be towards the northeast along Hogan Road, and you can see the abandoned home here, and this brush line here is actually the beginning of the Encore area. And another shot that is along Hogan Road looking to the east. This is a view of that Encore property that abuts this property to the, on the eastern boundary, and there is our Sage Meadows homes on the eastern side of that. It's 100 feet wide. Across Hogan Road is agricultural property. And looking to the west, you can just barely see State Highway 317 in the distance, and this is basically, the subject property is here, and it's all agricultural on the opposite side of Hogan. 37 notices were mailed. I received one in agreement from the GR property on the western, northwestern edge. Eight were received in disagreement from property owners to the north and to the east that are in Sage Meadows. The newspaper notice was printed on June 8th in accordance with state law. One was undeliverable. Just sort of a mention that the PD is defined as a flexible overlay zoning district that is designed to respond to unique development proposals, and of course, requires approval of the site plan that is minding. This is just a numbered iteration of the conditions that I just went through with a little bit more, I guess, detail, but that will be part of the ordinance if this is approved. On June 19th, Planning and Zoning did vote to approve this as recommended by staff, seven to zero. And of course, we recommend approval of West Side Village PD to rezone the subject property to PD 2F in accordance with the conditions as presented and with the site development plan. Any questions?
I have a question, although I think it might be a right-of-way question. We have not acquired the right-of-way that's needed on that property.
No, sir, we haven't. We've done the appraisal, made the initial offer, so in negotiations for that right-of-way.
But no concern about moving forward with the rezoning?
No, I did speak with planning, and as Lynn stated, the proposed development allows for that additional right-of-way needed for Hogan Road.
Thank you. Any other questions? At this time, I'll open the...
I'm sorry, yes, one question. Lynn, what is the timeframe for the widening of Hogan? I'm sorry, I can't remember that. Or Dawn, or somebody.
Councilmember Long, the project's currently in the right-of-way acquisition phase, as mentioned, and it's funded. The current TCIP proposal has it funded in FY '18, and the proposed budget does not recommend any changes to that, so we would anticipate if Council adopted the amended plan on August 25th that the construction funding would be available in the FY '18 fiscal year to begin once the right-of-way had been acquired.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions? At this time, I'll open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on this matter may do so. Please step to the podium and state your name and address for the record. There being no one wishing to speak, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Council, your pleasure on the first reading of item eight.
Motion to approve item eight is read.
I second that motion.
A motion to second, Madam Secretary.
Councilmember Long.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Pilkington.
Aye.
Councilmember Morales.
Aye.
Mayor Dunn.
Aye. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for your attendance and letting us...